We could all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present. Can we put these all in a whole here? Uh, council members for approving the city council minutes?
Mayor and council for the agenda, we do have an agenda modification tonight. We have an addendum, which is to add J-10 to the agenda, which would be consider resolution, authorizing staff to obtain proposals for community development director recruitment search. And also K-9, which is consider resolution authorizing the emergency repair of the water main leak on 285th Avenue Southeast.
A motion accepted. I got a motion from Councilman Lawrence to accept that modification and a Colson, I'm sorry. And a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Excuse me? Councilman Lawrence?
You can ask for clarity if you want to vote on what issue would be in order. He requests clarity.
On the agenda.
I'm gonna do it on every vote.
I'm confused on what he's asking here.
He wants you to call the vote, in other words, poll all of us to see what we voted.
I believe that was a four zero vote.
No, it wasn't.
Can I ask the city attorney something?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Can you reasonably ask on every vote to call?
The chair.
Can you let the city attorney speak? I asked him a direct question, I am the city councilman, so please let him speak.
Typically, you would only call a vote if there's a question as to who voted how, or if somebody abstained, if there's some question on what the vote was. And typically, all council members vote, they're authorized to vote, and then for some reason, they wish to abstain. They would state that they abstained, choose not to vote. And if somebody's not clear on what the vote is, uh, in order that it can be properly recorded in the, uh, in the minutes, it would be so stated, if it's a unanimous vote and the chair so, uh, so states, uh, then unless somebody takes issue with that, there wouldn't be much reason to, uh, call the question. But in order for there to be clarity, if somebody is not clear on what the vote was, they have the right to ask, uh, to call.
So correct me if I'm wrong, uh, city attorney Jocelyn, as the chair, I only vote if it's a tie vote.
No, that is not correct.
So I should be voting on everything and anything?
Yes, you are fully authorized to vote on, on all matters before the council, just the same as any other council member. And if for whatever reason, uh, you or any other council member chooses to abstain, then they can state that they choose to abstain.
Okay, I'm gonna respectfully request to you, mayor, then, that when we vote, when you say aye, you raise your hand so we don't have to wonder who voted what. We can avoid a three ring circus on that type of thing.
Fair enough, council member.
We will vote again.
Fair enough.
Um, just at our last meeting, we were advised that a silent vote goes through as an abstention. If a silent vote goes through as an abstention, which is different from what we've practiced any other year for the past however many years and however many mayors, a silent vote has always gone through as a, is a yea vote. But now we did change that to a silent vote goes through an abstention. There is no way for city staff to know who voted if we do not call every vote if a silent vote is an abstention. Just for example, this last vote, there was at least two silent votes on that. And it got tried to record as a four oh vote, which isn't accurate. We have five people up here. I can't go through as a silent yes and him go through as an abstention. That's not, that, there's no way that can ever be accurate. There's a whole reason for the silent vote to go through as a yes, just so there's not any argument as to what the vote was when our city clerk has to figure out the meeting minutes. If we go through as a silent vote, as Clark just directed to us, a silent vote is an abstention. There's no way our city clerk can ever figure out.
I'm not recommending a silent vote. If someone chooses not to vote, they should state, I abstain. But if for whatever reason they refuse.
But our mayor is clearly sure that he doesn't want to vote.
It's not. Nobody pressed my check anymore, perfect, okay?
The whole purpose is for clarity in terms of how the council voted. If there's a question, then anybody has the right for, to request clarification. Otherwise, the typical procedure has been, uh, the mayor, the chair, has stated what the vote is, and unless somebody, um, believes that a mistake was made in, in so stating, uh, and needs clarification, it's recorded that way.
I'm gonna respectfully, um, suggest to the mayor, then, then, and I don't know if this goes against Robert rules, you say, all those in favor, yea, all those opposed, nay, any abstentions? And then we get those people to raise their hand too. That way, we, we don't have to, once again, we don't have to do the three ring circus.
Fair enough, I'll say that.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, raise your hand if you're, I'm sorry, you call it, raise your hand.
Yeah, yeah. We're just gonna move forward here.
You should talk.
Uh, now, can I get, as a whole, can I get the approval of the city council minutes, please?
I move.
I have a first from Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Colson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That would be five to zero. Announcements, committee of a whole, Tuesday, March 19th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. City council meeting Tuesday, March 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Planning commission is also Tuesday, March 19th, immediately following the city council meeting. There's also a Parks and Recreation Culture Board meeting Tuesday, March 26th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We're moving right into business items, right Ms. Wood?
Right here in a couple of years.
Uh, business items consists of, uh, interview applicant for EDA. If that gentleman could step forward, please, Mr. Rod Barrow.
Is this for EDA and planning or?
Just EDA. Uh, you were given five questions, Mr. Barrow, uh, ahead of time, and I'm just gonna ask those one at a time, if you wouldn't mind giving your answers, sir.
That'd be fine, I just wanna say good evening to the council and to yourself as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Barrow, what has been your, your community involvement?
I did take some venture as well. But basically, I've been involved in public service of some sort for approximately 25 years. I have been, uh, in law enforcement itself for over 17 years. With that, uh, I did partake in a lot of community events, uh, with our community. Bike rodeo, snowmobile parade, ATV training, snowmobile training. Pretty lengthy list over the last 17 years. I, I enjoy doing things for the community, and that's what's really drawn me to still wanna do things for our community, and that's why I would like to be on the EDA.
Okay, and what is your business related background, sir?
As I just stated previously, a lot of my background is in public service, uh, over 25 years. I do have limited experience in business itself, however, I do feel that my experience in public service and being able to communicate with a variety of different people on a variety of different issues, that gives me an edge to be able to actually communicate with people, find out what the root cause of the problem is, and see if we can move forward and, uh, with the least of our friction.
And what strengths will you bring to the EDA?
Uh, I, uh, I'm a very passionate individual, but I'm also, uh, very forth. I'm not afraid to admit my mistakes. I think that also comes from my almost 20 years of leadership experience in the military. One of the things that, uh, I was responsible for while I was in the military was, uh, in operations NCOIC, which basically means it's my job to make sure that everything is functioning perfectly well for the colonel when he walks in the room and he can see a painted picture of the battlefield, if you will. That's some of the strength that I bring to the EDA, as well as my, uh, business and supervision, I'm sorry, my management supervision skills, which I did receive training and certifications from BCA on, as well as also studying budget and finance and, uh, economics for my bachelor's degree in criminal justice.
What do you see as a potential future opportunities in commercial growth for Isani?
Um, I, I see a couple of different approaches to this. Talking with your average person, um, they could go either way on this. Some people could say, we wanna do what's great for the city, some people want a solid tax base. I want both, commingreen, but I want us to have a solid tax base, I want us to have a solid growing community, but I don't want to jeopardize the community's image at the same time. Perfect example, uh, Highway 65 corridor, that's a hot topic right now. That is prime real estate for businesses in our area. And I do believe that that paints a pretty good picture of our community. We obviously don't want to see some run-of-the-mill fly-by-night organization with unsightly cleanup policies taking up that valuable space. Maybe it's something that we could help them relocate. At the, at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we're providing a service to the community, wanna make sure that we're providing, uh, financial stability, not only for the business owner, but to ourselves. And we need to view this as a business venture, because if businesses fail in our town, it's gonna be hard for us to sustain our future without that. We need to grow in, in our industrial park, we need to grow in our medium-sized, uh, restaurants and retail. I do believe that some of us have been here long enough, we actually did see, when we hit the depression kind of area there, we were building a lot of property that ended up sitting for a long time, and it did become nice or fur. It was a black eye for the city of Isani. Granted, those businesses are now filling up, and that's a good thing. But we need to be looking, looking forward, we need to look forward and also look back. We need to learn from our mistakes to move forward positively.
And lastly, can you attend meetings the first Tuesday of each month, starting at 7:30 PM or immediately following the 7:00 PM city council meeting, whichever is later?
Yes, sir.
Any questions that the council has?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to make your personnel file with the city public?
I believe my personnel file is publicly announced every time.
Are you willing to, that's private data, are you willing to make that public?
I don't see why it would matter, but yes.
And were you ever disciplined as a police officer with the city?
Yes, I was.
Any other questions? Do I have any motions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign? That is a four to one vote. Thank you, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
Deferred assessment discussion that was put on this agenda by myself, only because the city has received some letters and a document from an attorney. Hopefully, the council members has had a moment to review those. I'd also like to call Mr. Heeman forward. If there's any questions by this council, or he feels the need to explain these letters, I will, uh, make you aware, Mr. Heeman, that this has to be a time to issue.
Of course.
So if you'd like to step forward, sir.
Mayor, are you gonna abstain from this for conflict of interest?
Well, Mr. Lawrence, since the last meeting that you and I sat in together, a, a statement was made that you attacked this gentleman on social media, which I didn't have anything to say until I checked, and he is 100% right. So are you gonna abstain yourself, sir?
I have no financial interest in this.
Nor do I. Nor do I.
There's no interest, you accepted money from him.
That has nothing.
It's a lawful contribution, it's no.
Will you let me speak? You accepted money from him as a contribution to your campaign in exchange for $10,000 to be credited in this deferred assessment.
That is not true.
That's what will probably happen if that deferred assessment doesn't go through, that is a, that is a clear conflict of interest.
That is not true. I, I did take a contribution, which was a lawful contribution, Councilman Lawrence.
Can we take sol with our city attorney, go ahead and ask the city attorney a question?
City attorney Jocelyn, would you like to elaborate, sir?
Based upon review of the, uh, issue that has been raised regarding whether a campaign contribution disqualifies a recipient from voting on matters that, um, pertain to the, um, interests or financial interests specifically, uh, of the contributor, as long as the, um, proper disclosures were made, as long as a campaign, uh, contribution was within the limits, it appears there's no, uh, requirement that the, um, recipient, uh, recuse. In order to avoid any argument or appearance of impropriety, you might, uh, consider abstaining, but there does not appear to be a legal requirement to do so.
It may not be illegal, but it sure is unethical.
Not at all, even by your own ethics policy that you have on the city of Isani, I have it right in front of me, it clearly states that. And Jeff Johnson has no financial gain by me giving him a lawful contribution. He gains nothing with a yes or a no vote.
Regardless of who's involved, I'm gonna do what's right for the city of Isani.
And what's right for the city, but for every resident of the city of Isani.
Exactly, that's what we're about to discuss.
Continue, Mr. Heeman, this is time, let's keep in mind.
Does the council have any questions about the letters that they've seen? Okay, I'll start. The memo from Josie was that the letter correspondence attached, the deferred assess associated with this parcel, dated blah, 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 have given new hearing and next. Anyway, she's saying the staff received new information. That is not true. The letters you have in front of you are not new information. Can I ask Clark a question?
Go ahead.
Has council member Ross ever approached you before these letters were put to console that he knew about any of those letters?
No.
As staff? Okay. All right, I just wanna put a timeline together. These letters were out on social media. Ross knew about these letters, and Mr. Wimmer knew about these letters in October. I have proof. Mr. Lawrence asked that one of those letters be taken off social media by an administrator of a site, which they did, I have proof. Mr. Ross Lawrence, uh, not doing his duty as a council member, should have informed the attorney and the administration that there was a letter out there about the deferred assessments. He should have never raised the issue about the deferred assessments at the last meeting. Back to the timeline. The council may not have known about these letters. The administration should have known about these letters. The letters have been in existence since 1991, where's their copies? My attorney was in contact with Clark in 1991. Clark should have correspondence between my attorney and Clark himself about the letters. Um, this has been blotched from the beginning, just to let you.
Just for a moment, so Ms. Wood can elaborate on that.
I would just like to, um, acknowledge the fact that with mayor and council, what I placed on your, on your seats just before this council meeting is that a file was found regarding those letters, as well as some additional letters, which is what is stapled together there. It was misfiled, not with any deferred assessment, so.
And when was it filed, Ms. Wood?
Well, I read them today, um, we found them, I believe, maybe on Friday.
Was there any council action found from our records dating back to these letters?
No, I do not, I'm not aware of everything, because I know that there are a lot of things misfiled and hard to find 28 years ago, but I did not find any.
Okay.
Continue, sorry, Mr. Heeman.
That's good information and all, I'm sure Josie's will be filing that information to my attorney and sending that off to him as soon as possible. Um, the other point I wanted to make was, this has been blotched from the beginning. It was blotched in 1991, it was blotched by Clark. It shouldn't, I should have gotten meetings to the assessment, I should have gotten letters to go to the meetings for the Palomino Road project, I should have gotten letters to go to any follow-up they had. I should have had proper notice to an assessment hearing, as you can clearly see, the council tried to pull one over on me in 1991. Ron was the chief of police at the time, Irene was a city clerk. It was clearly dated, her handwriting memo saying, please bring this letter down to George Heeman the night before the assessment hearing. I called him attorney the very next day. The letters you see were part of the negotiation. You have more in the file, I have some more in the file. I only provided the city with three letters to stop them from passing a legal resolution, which you just did anyway two weeks ago. To let you know more about the, the letters, there's, the piece of property the city of Isani tried to assess me for is an empty lot, it has no structures on it. It's not a lot, it's acreage. When they put sewer and water in, I had no need for it. The sewer for alone, I would have to get an easement to go through one piece of property to my property, but the sewer was too high anyway. I mean, too low, too high. I couldn't have it flow to the street because of the way they put it. Water was 700 feet from my house. But the point was, is, is, they tried to assess me and say that I gained value for something that I couldn't even use. I couldn't use city sewer, I couldn't use city water. Just a point I wanted to make. The other point is, I gave, when the city of Isani wanted to put the Palomino project in, I called the city administrator, Michael Robertson. Michael Robertson looked up my parcel, said, Mr. Heeman, you don't belong in the city of Isani, you will not be given an assess for the Palomino Road project. A month and a half later, or, or a time later, I got a call from the city of Isani administrator again, asking me if they could have a temporary easement and a permanent easement for the Palomino Road project. And I asked him why he didn't invite me to the meetings. He said I wasn't going to be assessed, asked for my cooperation, I gave my cooperation. Next thing I know, I got that letter the night before the assessment hearing. Any questions? I didn't, I didn't, all I gave was, uh, we'll discuss that later. That's a whole different issue.
Any questions for Mr. Heeman, council?
Oh, my recommendation is abate them, abate. Definitely abate and definitely, uh, redo that resolution from two weeks ago, it was illegal in the first place. You should have gave me proper notice that you were gonna change terms and condition of the assessment that I don't believe I've ever owned, it's an alleged assessment. That's my recommendation. If the city really wants to spend more money than its, the assessment is worth, fighting me on an assessment I do not own, never have owned, shh. It doesn't make any sense, this is 27 years ago. Since then, you're assessing me for a road too, that is no longer there. That road has been tore up, haul away, there's no original sewer, no original water. And since then, you assess me a second time for a new road, new water, new sewer.
Which you used.
Which I don't use, they didn't even put, they don't, I have no sewer access, still with this.
Not the sewer and water, the road you used.
I have no sewer or water access.
Mr. Heeman, he's saying you used the road.
Just like every other resident on that road.
So?
Who paid for it.
So? So, I was told I was never gonna be assessed for that road.
There was no cost of action to that.
Ross, you seen here, did I argue with the second assessment? I could have put a wrench in that whole second assessment that just happened a year ago, because you assessed everybody $5,000 per property. There's not one property that gained $5,000 in value because they already had a road there. You just freshened it up.
It wasn't $5,000 per property, I don't believe.
Yes, it was.
Well, anything further, Mr. Heeman?
I don't know, is the council having questions? I say table it, I have, you know, I say table it for now until there's more discussion on it and more in-depth discussion with me and myself and my attorney.
At this time, I'd like to ask the staff if they have an opinion on the matter.
I will, uh, speak for the staff, I've reviewed this matter, we did not have access to these letters. My understanding that Mr. Heeman had told staff in the past that he had these letters, but was asked to bring them forward, did not do so until after the council's action at the last council meeting. However, the letters speak for themselves. And it appears that the, um, city administrator at the time, Mr. Robertson, stated that there would be, uh, an assessment hearing. While without a council resolution, it certainly can be argued that the administrator doesn't have actual authority. Uh, he has apparent authority, and there is, um, legal doctrine that if Mr. Heeman relied on that and, uh, did not take action at the time, that he, uh, should not be barred from the hearing that the law provides. Also appears from those letters that notice wasn't given in a timely fashion at the time. There is a statute that allows the, uh, city or any municipality, based on state laws, 469, uh, 071, to reassess, uh, under the procedures of 469.061. And, uh, the action the council took last time was based on 469.061 and the assumption that there had in fact been, uh, a valid hearing, which did take place in 1991, and the council records reflect that. But it didn't reflect that there was a glitch in the service of the notice. I take issue with, uh, Mr. Heeman's, uh, assertion that I was the one that botched that. No, I'm not the one who's, uh, responsible for sending out the letters and making sure the notice, uh, gets sent. You can see from the letters in front of you that he provided, uh, that, uh, efforts were made by the administrator to rectify that. You can also see that Mr. Heeman's counsel had correspondence with Mr. Robertson, and I'm not, uh, that correspondence wasn't with me. He did not take action, which was his prerogative. Bottom line is, we have legal authority to proceed now with, uh, an assessment hearing, if the council deems it appropriate, and to assess what would have been, and was originally assessed back at the time, except, uh, notice requirement wasn't, uh, technically, um, fulfilled. And accordingly, that would be action that the council could take. And so my recommendation would be that, uh, the council consider rescinding that portion of the prior motion, in other words, abating, uh, the assessment that was, uh, established at, uh, by resolution at the last council meeting, as to Mr. Heeman only. Uh, the others who were at the meetings, they received offer notice. I don't see any legal issue with regard to, uh, those deferred assessments being implemented as the council, uh, took action last time. But with regard to Mr. Heeman, uh, you could abate that if you, um, choose to do so. Then we could proceed to either reassess it, or as Mr. Heeman has suggested, uh, in his, uh... Then we could proceed to either reassess it, or as Mr. Heeman has suggested, uh, in his, uh, presentation to the council tonight, we certainly could take up, uh, discussions with his attorney and see if we could work out, uh, um, an agreement, uh, to proceed forward with the reassessment, uh, in a manner that, uh, uh, is workable, or the council could just proceed under, um, the reassessment statute authorization to, um, assess it if you choose to do so.
Clark, can city administrators make backdoor deals without approval of council? Is that legal?
The council has to take final action. Uh, honestly, it's twenty-eight years ago. While my fingerprints are all over this thing, I don't remember, uh, much about what happened in that particular instance twenty-eight years ago. And, uh, fortunately, we have a paper trail here in the form of these letters and of the form of the resolutions and all the documentation as to what was done. Um, as I stated earlier, while, um, the administrator wouldn't have authority to take action without, uh, council approval, which is typically done by a resolution or an ordinance. Uh, we don't see any record of that. Uh, he, he would have had apparent authority and he was certainly communicating, um, in a manner that the property owner, um, would reasonably anticipate, uh, being based on authority from the council, whether he actually had it or not. It's not documented as far as we know. Um, but I don't think we would prevail, um, trying to set aside on the theory that, uh, the administrator did not have actual authority to do it, uh, under the doctrines of apparent authority and estoppel. So it's my opinion that if the council wishes to proceed, uh, to reassess, that you would follow the statutory procedure that's laid out, uh, as an avenue under the statutes. If there's any problem with the, uh, uh, enforceability or legality of, of the prior proceeding. If mistakes were made, it made it invalid. You have the right to proceed to reassess if you so choose.
Would the reassessment give us another fifteen years?
You could. It would be at your prerogative in terms of how to spread it, but you could spread it over the fifteen years.
But we were told at the last meeting that it had to be collected within thirty years of the initial assessment.
This would be a new assessment based on the reassessment, in my opinion.
And Ms. Wood, um, we just spoke earlier this week about a call that I wrote last week. With or without it, the county would have been proceeding the exact same way. Is that correct?
Well, and I believe I sent you a text in response on that after I spoke with Finance Director Becker, because he's the one who spoke with the, um, people at the county.
Yeah.
It was Angie or whoever at the county. And he said that it was a new circumstance and he had gotten conflicting answers. He could not determine which way they would have gone because they went back and forth. So without asking for a statement from the county, I don't exactly know what they, but I did ask. I'm not sure what they would have done. I believe that's why they wanted a resolution from the city council, because they were unsure. But I, that's speculating.
This is just, the, my other statement is, this is just more reason to not, as a council sitting here today in two thousand nineteen, to not ever allow this to happen and just kick the can to another council. This decision was made in nineteen ninety-two and it was kicked all the way to loss till two thousand eighteen, till the council made a decision to annex properties. Um, my thought is just as a council for all of us sitting here, if we are going to set deferred assessments, we talk, we discuss actually annexing the properties individually at that time, so we don't have deferred assessments sitting out twenty, thirty years down the road. It's just, it's not good practice to sit here and try to add these arguments. Um, I also wish that this information would have been brought up in a professional manner initially at the time of the annexations, and this whole thing could have been avoided.
With that being said, I do got to say, it isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the city administrator or chief administrative officer, doesn't really act as that, Clark?
Yes, but he acts at the direction of the, of the council. There's a distinction between the city manager, who is vested under that type of, of, uh, statutory city, uh, with authority to make administrative, uh, decisions. The city administrator acts at the, uh, direction of the city council, so. But there's no question to, in my analysis of it, I believe that, uh, Mr. Heeman would have believed and had ever reasonably, unless his legal counsel told him otherwise, and that's privileged communication between them, but we'll never know, uh, what was discussed. Uh, but, um, he would have, uh, re- reasonably, um, relied on what representations were made by Mr. Robertson. And that's why I don't think we, um, be likely to be able to argue that the city isn't bound by the communications and the letters, uh, documentation that we've found, uh, and have been provided. That indicate Mr. Robertson said he would be entitled to a hearing prior to implementation of the assessment. And we certainly can fulfill that by proceeding accordingly.
Any other further questions?
Yes, I'd like to set something straight that, that Clark said, uh, and Ross said. Um, he said that these letters weren't offered until the resolution was passed. There was no reason for these letters to be offered before the resolution was passed, because the resolution came up at a mid-vote. There wasn't a resolution that was passed for any other reason. I had been in contact with the mayor of Visani and I didn't know I had these letters. This became a rush thing, you got to remember. I didn't officially become forced to belong to the city of Visani until January first. This deferred assessment would never be an issue because the agreements and the intent of the letters back in nineteen ninety-one was if I ever annexed into the city, which meant if I would develop my property. It was never meant to be paid if I was forced annexed into the city. And it doesn't matter. I don't owe it in any way. And you'll see it if you really want a five-ring circus and have an assessment hearing at a later date, you'll see. I don't owe this money. Um, the intent back then was, when my property got developed, you know, was right to belong to the city of Visani, at that time I'd come to council negotiate that price, abate that price, or pay the price. If I, uh, was going to sell my property for half a million dollars in development, I'm probably wouldn't even sit here and have this headache, you know, so. Oh, about the letters, he said, Ross said, if I would have gave them to the city sewer, they actually, I mentioned about these letters back right after the forced annexation. So it was out there. I was only forced to put them online. The city should have copies. I was waiting for the city. I thought they knew the situation. It wasn't like I wasn't vocal to everybody about the letters over all the years. They should have known. They finally filed the file. It's not my fault. So don't try to blame me for the actions that council did two weeks ago because of my negligence. I haven't been negligent in this whole situation. I've been the nice guy with the city of Visani. I gave them deferred, I, I gave them, uh, temporary easements. I gave them permanent easements. I let them use the water to put it in my pond. I never once have been combative with the city. It's been quite the opposite.
Thank you, Mr. Heeman. Any other questions from the council? Any motions?
I motion to abate the tax and have a, here, assessment hearing.
So you're motioning to abate the ninety-one tax?
Yeah.
And, and reassessed?
Have the tax hearing, except Mr. Heeman deserves.
Do I have a second?
Second then.
I have a first by Burgley to abate the ninety-one and reassess. You'll have to forgive me. What year was that one?
Well, it, it was the assessment that was levied for the improvements that occurred back then to reassess for that, yes.
Nineteen ninety-one.
Ninety-one project, yeah.
So we're abating the ninety-one now?
But we're, we're abating the assessment that you took action on two weeks ago. As far as it goes with regard to, applies to Mr. Heeman's property. And then the motion, as I understood it, was to move forward with a reassessment procedure as authorized by state law, when it appears that there was, uh, an error that would call the validity of the prior assessment into question.
Okay. Uh, I have a motion by Burgley to assess.
Abate.
Abate, cheese, the assessment and, and reassess. And a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Can I have just a clear?
I'll oppose. I'll oppose. Same thing. Any substan? I'll take that as a five-o vote. Moving forward.
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a commitment I have to be at.
Which, which I was well aware of. I'd like to accuse, uh, not accuse, but excuse, Councilman Lawrence, er, Lundine Cheese. I apologize to both you gentlemen. Moving forward, the snow storage discussion. Mr. Lawrence.
Um, this came up. Um, the residents spoke with me about, is discussion with the city being denied to, um, put snow, townhome association, as I'll let snow that they don't have anywhere to put it, and the city told me no. Um, which we've always told townhome associations, no, and residents that we don't pile snow for anybody. But then what bothered me the most is that the very next day, the city Public Works was snowblowing the boulevards and all that salty, gross, nasty snow that's on the snowbanks, they were blowing it ten to fifteen, twenty feet into private property. So one week they tell us, private property, you can't put snow, excess snow on public property. Yet they were blowing excess snow on private property. Seemed kind of contradictory. Um, so I asked Ms. Wood, she said they provide the options to allow the city to find a place for places such as townhome associations that have no place to put, there's no to put it, uh, in extreme years like this. So that's why I brought it up. I'll just defer to it. Wood, Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mayor and counsel. So, correct, he did reach out to me and that has been the past precedence. We've had other business, uh, the other business, um, request in the past to be able to have a storage area for the snow. Um, it was bred, brought to a previous committee and that we did not allow it. I've had probably a handful of contractors who have contacted me throughout the last four years asking the question, no, I'm sorry, we don't have a designated location in the city. Okay, thanks. Um, in regards to the blowing of the snow, um, the city does have that right-of-way area to put snow in. Our snow blower does blow, that goes onto the skidster machines, does blow probably good ten feet at least. Um, and then there is an easement beyond that. But in regards to sto- snow storage, I did con- ask our parks manager to reach out to the soccer association because of looking at any place in the city. It would require a large amount of area. Um, and I know of other cities that do have a location for the snow pile and storage from, um, vendors, contractors, the city itself. Um, they have large areas of, of land that they can put that snow. Um, they were not opposed to it. We do have an agreement with the soccer association, so there would need to be some amendment. But there was a, a soft, uh, we don't quite see a problem. We did already tell them that, you know, should it be considered? We know that Public Works would have to clean up any garbage because depending on what time of year, spring and stuff, you know, or I mean, early winter, I'm sorry, not spring, early winter, you're going to have a lot of trash that might get picked up with that snow versus like now, it's not such an issue, but Public Works maybe need to pick that up as well as push the snow higher with a loader, which most companies don't tend to have, which is why they want a location to put it, because the snow gets wider, not taller. Um, that's a pot- potential area that we could put it. Uh, that's really the only one that I came up with. Um, we have some other areas that like our downtown snow goes to some areas. Those areas are full, but the amount of snow that we have right now.
My concern is allowing outside contractors just to dump whatever they want, or I think we're going to have an issue if we allow, and I understand, uh, townhomes and apartments, the apartments should have space on their property to shove it to. Um, but the townhomes always don't, especially when they're built out. Um, we only have so many townhome associations. I think it'd be better to just leave it at that than open it up to contractors and everybody else. Um, and maybe a one or two times a year thing.
Councilor, I could relate it maybe to, um, grass clipping and hauling from them. I know that in the years past, we've been contacted from associations and other bigger firms, um, to just put that snow or that grass clippings because they're from the city and things like that. And that hasn't been allowed with committee because the reason was you do it for one, you do it for all. So I'm not sure how we would do the snow thing for a few and not all, but.
You, you get a permit or something and then you can go do it. Um, and I was always opposed to allowing, not allowing residential grass into our, into our compost.
I mean, commercial or contractor.
Residential grass picked up by a contractor.
Oh, right.
You know, in areas that don't always have contractors, in, in, or that always have contractors, such as townhomes or apartments. I don't see an issue with that going to our compost. I don't want a contractor dumping all of their grass clippings there from all over Minnesota, because then you have an issue with, with space issues. But if you had a permitting type issue, you had Public Works, they'll check that they're out there with their truck, they load it up and they go, you know, it's shouldn't be a huge, I don't think it'd be a huge hassle to regulate it to just the residential townhome associations or apartments. You only have a field and do a permitting process or something. I think there's option there than just saying it's a pollinon.
From my experience, um, with snow dump sites, they do leave a term on the trash. I mean, a term, more than you would expect. We, uh, city of Cambridge, Jalals contractors have dumped on a certain site. It's their responsibility to keep their piles pushed up though, if they want room to continue dumping. Just got to find, I would, I would not recommend the soccer fields.
Can have trash all over those soccer fields.
It's, it's not so much trash. You're going to have rats from dump trucks going in there.
That's true.
So, just, it, I would, I, I'm not opposed to having a snow dump site available for contractors to dump business snow from parking lots and stuff at, but I would not choose the dump.
Yeah, and I think the handicap we have is that we don't have large, Cambridge, just correct me if I'm wrong, has a large field that they use.
Yeah.
We just don't have a large city field.
Covered in trash, it comes spring. And rats.
Which takes personnel, I mean, I mean, you should clean it up, takes personnel to restore it back to the way it was.
Yeah. And then the contractor is responsible for, um, pushing up their own piles.
Do they pay something to help offset the cost that, whether it's the maintenance crew or Public Works crew to come pick up that trash?
I am not aware that they do. I know in the past, we've had, um, crews from Visani coming to El Camo, cleaning it up.
They might have to make the contractors clean it up. They made the mess.
Who's going to be there to police it though? You're going to have.
It's in their contract. If you make a contract and they have a permitting process with them, then they have to do it or they don't ever get to do it.
Right, but whose trash is it? Is it this contractor's trash or this contractor's?
Every contractor that dumps there needs to make that site look like it did before they started dumping there.
Yeah, that's really, you, it's, that would be impossible to police.
Do it one year and if they don't do it, they lose it. It's just.
But then it could be only one contractor doing it and then the rest of them suffer.
So I definitely think we have some options to look at as far as this is concerned.
And there's, there's not a huge rush on this. If we want to look at it and see what there is, it's, you know, that one association already moved their snow. But their hangup was, they, we piled our snow in our backyard and then the city the next day came with their loads and pushed all the sidewalk snow on top of our piles. And that was their hangup. You know, and I just don't see how that's fair.
So if they put their snow on, on the edge of their property, you made like a, the berm or something?
Yeah, if, if this, well, it was snowbowed onto the property.
As you can, by the sidewalks, right?
So if this, if the private residents can't put snow on public property, which they can't, they can't shove their snow into the road, that would, they'd get a ticket and then the government shouldn't be blowing their snow on the private property.
But there is a line and we could define it exactly, to make sure I know exactly where you're talking about, which road, of where, how far that right-of-way goes in. What they may be determining as public or private property might actually be a public right-of-way.
Where I saw the snowblower blowing wasn't anywhere near that association. I just saw the snowblower blowing, that was my own connection.
Okay.
And our city snowblowers blow over the sidewalk or the trail, plus another 10, eight to 10 feet, it looked like when I saw them on County 5 blowing. And they were on County 5 blowing those hard snowbanks with that snowblower, and they were going way down the private property. And that's what I, that connection is, I was that, that was my own personal connection. So, just something to think about, it doesn't need a decision tonight, doesn't need anything to be done tonight, it's just, I thought it would be an option.
Fair enough. Just for, on my note, I believe Councilman Lawrence asked about the dog park signs, if you thought you called?
Yeah. We're talking about the dog park.
That's what they want, they wanna put at least two of those up, and then they have a trash receptacle right at the entrance as well. But this is gonna go back to the park and rec though to make sure that...
And that's why the other thought to that, both sides are awesome, but just in the rules, I'd like something inside of that park, if people don't do it, we're not gonna keep on, the city's not gonna keep up on it, you know, so...
And if they're caught doing it, maybe?
If people aren't, something like if people aren't responsible, the park will lose the park, the park privileges will be lost. I think that needs to be clear, because literally look on social media with the Cambridge Park, that everybody says they can't go there because it's all full of dog.
Which I've seen and will agree. I'll bring it back to park and rec on the council's behalf.
Thank you.
Voice your concerns. Moving forward, new information regarding the 1991 deferred assessments on TID 16.032.1200. Ms. Wood?
Mayor and Council, that is the action, basically, that was the same item that was on for discussion, but the action was, there wasn't action taken.
Perfect.
So staff worked to create a resolution.
Okay. An informational letter to residents with the abutting sidewalks.
So this is brought back to council, staff has worked to create a informational letter. We also included the hydrant clearing because we do take a fair amount of calls in years like this with the amount of snow that might do two things at once. Staff has prepared a cost for that. There are approximately 804 parcels or properties, residents that would receive a letter because they have an abutting sidewalk. And the estimated cost, including paper, postage, envelopes, printing, would be $638.94 to send out to those 804 parcels. Staff is seeking direction if we should send these out. An alternative to this would be to work, to incorporate the same information in a very, in a very, in a way that we can get it out to everyone, often maybe in the Isanian or other newsletters, things like that, potentially more on the website. We do have it on the website, but potentially more people will see it if we leave it up for the year or something.
Yeah, I personally think that that's a crazy amount of number to spend on. What was the number again to have a special water?
I believe, Mike, off the top of his head, from where he had previously worked, guessed it would estimate about $1,700. But there were some reoccurring costs with that, and because there were some software changes and different things with that. Considerably less than that. But that is something in our route that the city is looking to go towards, definitely this could be incorporated into that because there's other messages, I believe, Council Collison, that you mentioned, that other things could go on and be very helpful for people.
Granted, it's, it's, it's a lot of money, but every resident will get that announcement. Whatever announcement that may be.
I guess my question to you is about Councilman Collison is, do we do this now or do we wait for next year, make sure we just cram the information down?
Well, I think, I don't think we could do it quick enough right now.
No.
Do it badly.
Yeah.
But definitely, I think, looking, look at, add it in the future here.
Absolutely. Or even like, I mean, hopefully it's coming down the pipeline, we get more informational science that we can put it on.
For now, the mailers, like what you presented, is probably the quickest way to get that word out now versus...
Do you feel we need to do that now, even though we hopefully only have another month of this?
We'd be lucky to only have another month of this.
True. It is Minnesota. We're looking for direction to send Ms. Wood on what we'd like to do at council.
I mean, what, how soon can these letters go?
We have the paper, we have the envelopes in-house, so I think it's just a matter of having staff, I would say this week for sure, we could get them out.
People would have them in the mailbox next week. There's still quite a bit of March left, the snow coming this weekend.
All right, well, we're already in Tuesday, it might be...
I'm ready to help you out.
Oh.
No?
Yeah, within a week's time, I think, we could maybe get out, so that maybe put us into mid next week at the latest.
My motion that we send this letter out.
I have a motion that we send the informal letter out to residents by Councilman Burgley. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Four to zero vote in favor of sending it out, Ms. Wood. Resolute, or, yeah, resolution passes. Resolution on the 2019 approving a special event application for BMX 2019 Race for Life and DK Gold Cup qualifier. And I believe we have Larry. I cannot pronounce your last name and I wasn't gonna hack it, sir.
Murkowitz.
There it is.
Mayor, council members, I'm here to talk about the upcoming event in, it's April 13th and 14th. These are big races for USA BMX. The first one is the Race for Life. Race for Life is a big race in USA BMX. Years ago, we had a young kid, 12-years-old, found out he had leukemia, BMX racer. He did die from this illness. Every track will go out and have this Race for Life. What we do is, all of the proceeds that we take in, our riders' payments, extra money that we do make during that weekend, we donate, us and USA BMX donate to leukemia and lymphoma, so hopefully we can find a cure for this, our children. The second one is the Gold Cup Qualifier. A Gold Cup Qualifier is a qualifying race for our region. People will travel from about seven states around and come here to Iscany. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna try qualifying for what's called a Gold Cup Plate. It's a bigger event, we expect at least 850 people to be coming in here that weekend. That's a minimum. It seems like we grow another 10% every year. Last year, we were over 800. So we expect at least 850, maybe possibly 900 more people coming in for that big event. So we're requesting an application for a special events permit for that weekend.
That's awesome, and thanks BMX for doing that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Burgley, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Again, a four to zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Murkowitz, did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Resolution for 2019 providing approval for a city like Iscany to purchase the blower, I believe you gentlemen saw this, for Cambridge Iscany bike and walk trail maintenance.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Collison to approve, second by Burgley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four to zero. Resolution for 2019 authorizing advertisement for bids for the refurbishment of Bluebird Park Playground. Ms. Wood, you mind touching base on this?
Yes, this was a project that was budgeted in the 2019 budget. This is to disassemble the main large structure equipment at Bluebird Park, to take it apart and then take the metal pieces, have them stripped down and repowercoated, and then to put the playground structure back together. This is to revive it in a much less costly amount than taking that park structure down and then buying brand new. So this is a great alternative that our staff was able to find and make an option. We're excited to see the possibility of what it'll look like and carry that on to other parks to revive them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Burgley to approve, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. No substantive, four to zero once again. Resolution with the 2019 approving, this was very confusing to me, Ms. Wood, we're approving the pawn shop license renewal to Northern Pawn Incorporated, but we have ABCDs. Is this all going in one, or are we doing these separately here?
So they're all together. The way it's written may look a little confusing in the first one, it's number nine, which is for the pawn shop. And then below that, it says on sale Sunday liquor license renewals. And then those are all clumped together, but yes, they are all under one reservation.
So do we have representatives from the local teams?
Do we have any issues with any of these businesses for this?
No.
And no liquor license issues or anything?
No.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lawrence to approve these, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor say aye.
We have a discussion?
Absolutely. Ms. Burgley?
When you say no problem, is that, I mean, because usually we view there are crime stats. Is that what you mean?
All about health benefits.
We have no crime, the crime is ruled?
Yep.
We've had problems with some in the past, but they've all done a good job.
Correct.
Okay. I'm done discussing.
Was that a four to zero vote?
Or did you recall the vote?
Councilman Lawrence, second, a motion to approve, the Councilman Lawrence seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Four to zero on that one. There is a 10 for an amendment. Ms. Wood, you'd like to touch base on that?
Yes, Mayor and Council, so we have had our economic development position vacant since August of 2018, and then the community development position vacant since January of this year. That has gone through, or is on council to combine those two positions with the revised draft description and scale and points. Staff is going to be posting again for that position for the community development director because we were unable to fill it in this last go-around. And staff is seeking input and direction from council to receive proposals from recruiting firms, not to actually go with the recruiting firm at this time, but just to have it as a secondary option should we not be able to fill the position in the next round.
Why didn't these two qualified candidates that we had accept the position?
The first candidate did not really give a reason at all, just declined, he didn't counter it or anything. The second listed three reasons why, I believe. The first who had to do with the amount of commute and conflicting schedules. The third reason was because he had watched city council meetings recently and it gave him cause for concern. I can forward out that email to council and add my memo if that's approved.
Do we need to approve anything, or what are we doing with this?
Yes, we, staff gave a motion to be able to seek out proposals.
Motion to approve. I have a motion by Councilman Lawrence to approve, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four to zero. Approving the consent agenda.
I have a question on this. We have, I see one of our officers sitting back there. Are we waiting for a specific motion on this K4, or is that all consent agenda?
Well, I know, Ms. Brooks can probably touch base on that and clarify it for you.
So it's all consent?
Yes, K4 is for the rehiring of Tanner Hagan on the police department.
Okay.
I had a sentence structure fix that I had to make, and that's why there's a second one I got.
Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Burgley to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four to zero. Any other communications? Draft minutes for the, oh, sorry.
Motion to, we motion the, whatever you do, we're fine.
What is it called?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
I have a motion by Councilman Burgley to adjourn, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four to zero, therefore we stand adjourned.